Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6:00 PM on September 10th, 2025, and I hereby call this regular session of the Town Council of Whitestown, Indiana, to order. Mr. Sumner, if you would please do the roll call.
Councilwoman Hancock?
Here.
Councilman Nichols?
Here.
Councilman Patterson?
Here.
Councilman Smock?
Here.
Councilman Thomas?
Here.
Thank you very much. Katie, do we have anyone today for the pledge? No? Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And before I get to the approval of the agenda, it was correctly pointed out to me that today is World Suicide Prevention Day. I am not qualified to speak on this extremely important topic, but what I would say is that most of us in this room have probably had this subject touch their lives in some way, shape, or form. If you need help, please reach out and get help. There's a myriad of opportunities for that out there. Speak to someone, speak to anyone. And if you know someone that is struggling, please talk to them. That being said, approval of the agenda. Fellow council members, I would like to modify the agenda slightly to move the public hearing 10A for first read of the budget. I want it to coincide with the actual first read of the ordinance after Crown has done their presentation and council has been able to ask a few preliminary questions. So the idea being that Nathan does the presentation, we ask questions, then we open it up to public hearing and public input. I think it would be a little bit better flow having that all in one place. If you would agree to that change?
So are you looking then to move new business H to effectively a 10A2 or move 10A to occur at 11H?
I'm looking to move 10A to occur at 11H.
Okay, just clarifying. I will second that move.
Is there any concern or questions regarding that? All in favor of this change, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So done. Thank you. That being said, are there any other questions or concerns regarding tonight's agenda?
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor of the agenda, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda stands. Item three, presentations, I have none listed. Are there any surprise presentations I don't know about today? No?
Great.
Item four, clerk treasurer report. Counsel, you have this before you. Are there any questions regarding the clerk treasurer report? Thank you. Item five, town manager report. Katie, do you have anything for us tonight? Thank you. Item six, department reports. DPW Building Planning, Parks Rec, Public Relations, WFD, WMPD. Counsel, you have this before you. Are there any questions? No? Very good. Item seven, public comment on topics not related to an agenda item. I have none turned in to me. Are there any online?
No one online has requested to speak on non-agenda items.
Thank you, Todd. Item eight, approval of consent agenda.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda containing items as follows. Item A, approval of meeting minutes from the August 13th, 2025 Town Council meeting. Item B, approval of meeting minutes from the August 21, 2025 Town Council Budget Workshop. And item C, claims, August 2025 expenses town, August 2025 revenue claims, and August 2025 utility claims.
Second.
Item has been made and seconded. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item nine, unfinished business, second reading of ordinance number 2025-18, an ordinance amending the Whitestown Unified Development Ordinance Parking and Loading Standards. Todd?
Good evening, council. This is, yes, second read of this. So last month, we kind of briefly went over this proposal. So it does make some modifications to some of those parking issues that we had identified at Plan Commission as well as the Board of Zoning Appeals. Plan Commission did hear this and sends a favorable recommendation on these changes. As you know, we talked about this here at first reading last month as well. Be happy to go into any detail that you would like on these changes, but I will kind of pause here and see if there are questions.
I do have a question. Just bear with me two seconds. Constituents sent me an email about this, and I'm going to just pull it up. All right, I'm going to read this verbatim. It just says, "My only question would be if the campers, boats, and work trailers that keep popping up in our area count as motor vehicles?"
So recreational vehicles, trailers are... This piece of the regulation is for essentially commercial development that's requiring parking spaces on their spot. This does not address any vehicles within the public right of way. That is a separate section of the municipal code, not the UDO.
Thanks.
Yep.
Are there any further questions for Todd at this time? I would hear a motion.
I'll make the motion, we approve ordinance number 2025-18, an ordinance amending the Whitestown Unified Development Ordinance Parking and Loading Standards.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item B, second reading of ordinance 2025-19, an ordinance amending the Whitestown Unified Development Ordinance definitions. Todd?
Thank you again. So just as a brief reminder, this is the second piece. Plan Commission did send a favorable recommendation on this as well. And just quick overview, there were a number of definitions in the UDO that either we didn't have included based on specifically some of the parking uses that we just considered in the last ordinance, or there were some conflicts in just general definitions and updated some others that we didn't have definitions for. You know, new things that come up, EV. You know, several things related to electric vehicles and charging that also got definitions added here. Again, just trying to keep the ordinance current with relevant trends and activities that are out there.
Thank you, Todd. Are there any questions from council?
No questions, but I did notice a couple of misspellings in there because I actually read the whole thing. God save me. But that's just kind of what I do. So whatever motion we have on this, whether it be me or another, I would say subject to correction of the spellings just so that Todd has an ability to correct those without having to come and revisit again.
Perfect.
And I'll connect with you on the ones that I caught.
Thank you. Yep.
It's a big document. I do the same thing.
Are there any further comments or questions? Mr. Nichols, if you'd like to make your motion.
Sure. I make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-19, amending the UDO definitions subject to correction of any misspellings or typos within the document.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd. Item C, second reading of ordinance 2025-16, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, amending Chapter 8.25 of the Whitestown Town Code, abandoned and unregistered vehicles.
I'm happy to talk about it. If anybody has any questions, there has been no changes to this ordinance since the first read. However, I do want to address Counselor Thomas's...
I think I asked that question out of order. It was for...
Was it for this one?
It was for this one, not the first one. Sorry about that.
No problem. What I can tell you is that in this ordinance, it does define motor vehicle as a vehicle that is self-propelled. The term does not include a farm tractor implement of husbandry or a motorized bicycle that is from the state statute. A camper would not fall in that unless it has an engine and is self-propelled. And what I wanted to reiterate is that this ordinance in front of us tonight is just on abandoned and unregistered vehicles. It is not about parking of maybe a camper or other type of RV in public right of way or in people's driveways. That's going to be subject to another ordinance that will hopefully be in front of you next month on a first read.
Got it. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions about this ordinance?
I don't have any questions, but Eric's last name is still misspelled.
We're going to track this and see how long it goes. That's what I get for having a silent H. From now on, maybe I can refer to you as Vice President Nick Chels.
I've been called worse.
I can't say that. Are there any other questions or comments regarding this item? I would hear a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-16, ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, amending the abandoned and unregistered vehicles code.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. Item D, second reading of ordinance 2025-17, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, amending Chapter 5.10 of the Whitestown Town Code Solicitors.
So counsel, for this ordinance, you will see that there is a version A red line. The version A has to do with a update that was requested by Chief Rolston with regards to the number of vendor solicitor licenses that should be requested and approved by each vendor. The discussion with Chief and I came to fruition because from my understanding is that there have been a significant amount of vendor solicitor licenses being requested. It's my opinion that a reasonable time, place, manner restriction, such as the number of licensees per vendor, would be appropriate. So we went ahead and drafted an amendment to address Chief Rolston's concerns. It does give him the ability to provide additional licenses under his discretion. So that is the amendment in front of you tonight that is different from the first read last month.
So to be clear on how this would work, first, after questions, answers, comments, there would have to be a motion to adopt and add the amendment to the item. Should that pass, then we would vote on the actual passage of the ordinance. Before we get to whether or not to add the amendment, are there any questions or comments about the ordinance overall or about the amendment itself? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt and add version A to this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to add version A as an amendment to this ordinance. All in favor of this addition, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Version A is added to the amendment by 5-0. That being said, I would entertain a motion for passage of this ordinance.
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2025-17, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, amending Chapter 5.10 of the Whitestown Town Code Solicitors, version A.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. As indicated at the beginning of the session, public hearings has been moved to 11H. So we are now in 11 new business A. Consideration of a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, regarding certain tax abatement deductions for Ring Container Technologies LLC. And we have a guest to present.
Good evening, Town Council. My name is Andrea Kern, and I'm the CEO of the Boone EDC. And at the Boone EDC, we like to say we're the county's front door for growth. And every day, our office fields new leads and site visits from companies that are evaluating whether to bring jobs and investment here. So we're proud to be your partner in economic development, working alongside you to make Whitestown and Boone County the top choice for families and businesses to build a stronger community. So tonight, I'm here to introduce Project Evergreen, which is Ring Container Technologies and a project that we feel is a great opportunity for Whitestown. You'll hear more details directly from Alex Miller with KSM and the company here tonight. But in short, Ring is one of the largest plastic container manufacturers in North America. They were founded in 1968 and are known for its focus on sustainability and innovation. They serve food, beverage, and household products with a strong track record of reducing their environmental impact through recycling and lightweighting initiatives. They are really exactly the kind of forward-thinking, advanced manufacturing company that aligns well with Whitestown's growing industrial base and what you've been looking for as well. So they plan to lease space at 5650 Belcher Way, making $77 million investment. That includes about $8 million in real property investment and $69 million in personal property. This expansion, which is their first Indiana location, will create 56 new high-quality jobs with an average wage of nearly $30 an hour, not exclusive of benefits, which is 25% higher than the current county average. So we're really getting a great return all around for the community as well. So we're recommending the Town Council considers a five-year business personal property tax abatement for Ring Container Technologies with the following structure: 100% in year one, 80% in year two, 60% in year three, 40% in year four, and 20% in year five. And really, I think most importantly, this project will diversify Whitestown's tax base and help insulate the community against future economic headwinds and really continues to ensure that you can remain resilient to all of those changes as well. So now I'm going to ask Alex Miller with KSM to come up and give a presentation about Ring Container as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrea. Andrea covered most of this, so I don't think we need to run through the whole deck. But good evening, council. Alex Miller, I work with KSM Location Advisors. We work nationally as a site selection and economic incentives consulting firm representing tonight Ring Container Technologies. And I'd like to quickly introduce or point out that we've got two members from the company here with us tonight sitting back here. We have Tim Farrell and Zach Cheek, who are very excited to be here. And I think maybe a little bit towards the end of my comments, Tim can come up and talk a little bit more about their commitment to the community and different locations that they have facilities. So like Andrea mentioned, this would be Ring's first facility in Indiana. They've got about 20 locations globally, 18 of those being in the US. Throughout this process, we've looked at a couple of different locations, not just in Indiana, but some bordering states as well. As we moved through kind of the negotiation phase, both with state and local governments in different communities, Whitestown has stood out, and Whitestown and Indiana have stood out as a great place for this company to do business. Very responsive, the town manager, town staff, the Boone EDC have all been fantastic to work with throughout the process. So here we are tonight in front of you requesting the five-year tax abatement on $69 million worth of specifically injection stretch blow molding equipment. So think of when you buy a salad dressing from a grocery store, the bottle that it comes into. This is the type of equipment that produces those products. This equipment will be installed over a four- to five-year period. The company is extremely committed to making this a long-term investment with plans to sign a 10-year lease with, hopefully, an extension for another 10 years beyond that. And Tim will mention that they are a long-term investor in their locations that they have across the country. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. If not, I'm happy to have Tim Farrell, he's a senior vice president for sales and marketing from Ring, come up to talk a little bit about their commitment to community and community partnerships.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you for inviting me here. We can talk a lot about advanced manufacturing technology and how Ring has proven itself in the marketplace to be a growing concern, which is why we're here. We're looking to expand our operations in the US. We've looked at a lot of different areas around the country, and we've decided that Indiana is a perfect location for us to continue to expand. But instead of talking about our manufacturing technologies, what I really wanted to talk about was our commitment to community. And all of our facilities around the US, in Canada as well as in the US, we're bringing individuals, talented individuals, into local communities to become part of those communities. We're going to be living where we manufacture our products. And so we talk about the people being part of the most expensive and most valuable assets at Ring Container. And so just to give you a peek as to what we really feel about our employees, we give every one of them, every eligible employee, gets 16 hours of paid volunteer time per year. That's time that they can spend in their community doing nonprofit work, working with schools. Our engineers will oftentimes sponsor STEM and robotic teams at local high schools, local junior high schools. Just to give you an idea, some of the places where we've done some work along those lines, in Rockford, Illinois, our robotics team sponsors several high school STEM programs for robotics. Our Hanover, Pennsylvania plant, four times per year, we go out with the Council of Churches and provide food assistance to the community. Our Val Josta, Georgia facility has a hunger campaign that they sponsor annually. In Memphis, we're a big proponent for the Wolf River Conservancy, which is an environmental program, as well as the Habitat for Humanity. So all of these efforts that we have are about tying ourselves into the community. As Alex had indicated, we're preparing to do a 10-year lease. And as we look around our facilities nationwide, we are in the communities literally for decades. We are long-term partners. We would like to be a long-term partner here in Whitestown. We believe we can add real value to the community here, to the fabric of Boone County. And I'd like to say that we're grateful for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Happy to answer any questions.
I don't have a question per se, but I would like to thank both Ring Company and the Boone EDC, Andrea, for bringing this before us. This is a sort of industrial and manufacturing partnership that Whitestown's been looking for, in my opinion. Not only is it a town-friendly deal, but what you provide to the community, including good-paying jobs, the way you reinvest in the community, and your commitment to be here for a while, and you're even getting into a building that's already there, speaks volumes as something I think we've been looking for. So thank you for that.
Yeah. Great.
Yeah, I think the only comment I have would be to reinforce the couple of pieces there. One, appreciate the interest in such a big personal property investment within Whitestown. That's a ton of personal property. Haven't seen these things for years. So that's a heck of an investment within our community, as well as your openness on... It's no secret, we've had some meetings up here publicly before that we've got a number of open buildings up in that area that we would really like to get filled. And so your company's interest in focusing on that and helping us fill one of those with skilled manufacturing, good jobs, good salaries, and a lot of personal properties, really appreciate it. Really appreciate the interest in the area. We think it's great, or we wouldn't be up here serving it. So I appreciate your interest as well.
Let's see, I don't have any... I just have a question. This may be more for the attorneys, and then I have a question for Todd. Do we know, does this have a 20% pass-through?
That would be a question for Todd.
Do you know, for the schools and public safety? I know with some of our abatements has the 20% pass-through that goes to police and fire and schools.
So I believe there is a property tax that's only, yeah, 80% to them, and then essentially 20% to the town. So there's not a pass-through that goes from the town to the schools. We, the town, get that 20%.
Okay. And then I'm assuming the RDC approved this? Did they see this?
So the tax abatement just comes to the council.
Counsel, okay. Thank you. The only thing, you know, nothing against this particular one because I think this is a wonderful one to have. But I think in some of our abatements going forward, we need to be very careful because we do have some of these 10-year abatements that are on real property, and then we're having investors come in and asking for personal property on top of the 10-year abatement. So just something to look forward as the businesses come to us. This one's a great one. You know, this is a good one, so make sure that they continue to be like that, for sure.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Helps if I have the red one. Mr. President, I'd make a motion to approve the resolution for the tax abatement for Ring Container Technologies.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We look forward to working with you guys. Thank you very much. New business item B, consider approval of inter-local cooperation agreement between the Town of Whitestown and Citizens Water.
Mr. President, I'm happy to talk about this item. So on the agenda, it says Exhibit B. Exhibit B is actually the resolution, and then Exhibit A would be the actual inter-local agreement. This, as the title suggests, pertains to the sale of the water utility between Whitestown and Citizens. So I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have regarding the resolution. It would be prudent to pass this resolution this evening because this is something that needs to be utilized in the town's presentation to the IURC. The four main points of this inter-local agreement, first and foremost establishes basically a citizens of Whitestown. It transfers the power from citizens into citizens of Whitestown. And then it also establishes the operating board. And then the administration of the citizens of Whitestown would be through this agreement with town participation in the advisory board. So the target, it's my understanding that the target is to file a petition with the IURC as soon as possible. The target date would be around October 1st. And it's important to get that as soon as possible in front of the IURC because it takes about 210 days. They have... IURC has about 210 days to respond and approve the sale. So it could be a lengthy wait for that sale to be effectuated. And like I said, I'm happy to take any questions about this agreement.
Thank you very much, Ashley. Any questions or comments from council?
Ashley, I was... I read through it, and I had a question about the makeup of the board.
Mm-hmm.
Because it made it sound like there would be a representative from Whitestown on that board, but it doesn't say who that person is or who picks that person.
If I could jump in, I asked the same question a little bit ago. And basically, this body, just like other boards and commissions, would nominate and vote on a representative from town.
Okay, so it's a council...
Correct me if I'm wrong?
It's our understanding that it's a council appointment.
So it would be a council vote. Now, should the status of the town change, that appointing body can change. But as it stands right now, we would do it the same way we do for a council-approved.
Okay. The only other thing is, is this also considered... Okay. The only other thing is, this also considered kind of like our purchase agreement?
No, this is the inter-local agreement between the citizens and the town. It's statutory, and as I said, it's specific to the purposes that's listed in this agreement, which what I was saying earlier, there's four of them today. But it is not the asset purchase agreement.
Okay. Have we signed that agreement yet?
That has not been signed.
Okay. The only thing I would make a comment on, not necessarily for this, is that, you know, at our last meeting, we were going to work together about getting some language that I had requested to be put into the ordinance. Only one piece got added in, and it was only a one-mile boundary. None of the other things that I had requested got into it. So, I'm just wanting to make sure that the residents know that, that I had asked for some additional provisions to kind of close up some loopholes, and that did not happen. So, that's just to let everyone aware. But that's the only questions and comments I had.
Are there any other questions or comments from council regarding this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the inter-local cooperation agreement between the Town of Whitestown and Citizens Water.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor. Any caveats, saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries 5-0. Item C, authorization to upgrade from the ARC GIS Online to ARC GIS Enterprise. Todd?
Good evening again. Just as some brief background, we've been operating, our JS staff has been operating under the ARC GIS Online, basically a cloud version of the overall software. The, with that, right, we have a lot of tools, but not all of the tools in the toolbox option. Also has limitations on the number of licensed users. So, anybody that views everything online is not essentially a licensed user, but essentially staff that is providing essentially inputs to that, you know, become licensed users, either a creator or a viewer license in there. So, we're essentially, and we've been, right, working under this since 2021, I think is when we initially signed up. But we've got to the point where we've got lots and lots of folks utilizing this and providing and creating really good data for our maps and information. The enterprise version that we were requesting to upgrade to, we go, I think, from 50 licensed users in both the creator and the viewer section to 250. And then, there's also a number of other features that enterprise offers us to be able to do, one of those being the business analyst, which essentially could assist on the economic development side of things in terms of helping site selection. Andrea already left. She'd probably be excited to hear that. But provide, you know, essentially good, sound data from our tools, as well as national data about specific sites that we can, you know, send out quickly and easily to folks. We are in essentially the middle of a three-year agreement currently for online. They would allow us to essentially upgrade to enterprise in that same term, and we'd be essentially paying kind of the balance of year two. And that year three would go up to the full $30,000, $30,200, I think is the number that's on there. And then, obviously, in the next round of agreements, right, we would be in that similar realm. So, that's where we're at. Essentially, current spending would be under, right, the typical request for council, but knowing that this is, would be still part of a three-year agreement, I wanted to make sure that we got here and let council know this is what we're requesting to be able to do, to continue to provide quality GIS information out there to everyone.
Thank you very much, Todd. We keep on growing, don't we?
We do.
I will entertain any questions or comments from council. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve this expenditure exceeding $25,000, not to exceed $48,000. Sorry, this word. Authorization to upgrade from the ARC GIS Online to ARC GIS Enterprise.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for the approval. All in favor, any caveats, saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Item D, consider expenditure exceeding $25,000, not to exceed $48,081 for annual renewal of CityWorks software licensing and maintenance.
So, this is just our CityWorks platform. This is literally just the licenses that we have through CityWorks. This is for the AMS, which is the asset management side, and then the PLL, which is, Todd, help me out, planning, licensing, and land, is what that's PLL stands for, I think. Yep. So, this is just the licenses through that vendor we use. We've had them since '23. We're just wanting to renew our license again for next year.
Are there any questions or comments or concerns from council? Hearing none, I would consider a motion.
Make the motion, we approve the expenditure exceeding $25,000, not to exceed $48,081 for the annual renewal of CityWorks software licensing and maintenance.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, any caveats, saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries 5-0. Item E, consider expenditure exceeding $25,000, not to exceed $158,580 for purchase of SCADA equipment for the wastewater WWTP collections. Thank you.
So, this is for six of our, yeah, six of our lift stations. This is essentially to put a brain in those lift stations. Right now, we use what's called Omni. If something goes down at those lift stations, it gives us a phone call, and we have to send someone to find that problem. This kind of gets a brain behind it, where we can remotely look into some of those problems. Yes, some of that man-hours are still going to be applied to the go and the fixing if there's a major issue, but it kind of lets us remotely manage, see how the system's running, establishes a secondary call-out system. I'm thinking, I don't think I missed anything else. Essentially, it's a brain.
Are there any questions, comments, or concerns from council regarding this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I like the info we'd get off of that. So, I will make a motion to approve the expenditure exceeding $25,000, not to exceed $158,580 for the purchase of the SCADA equipment for wastewater treatment plant collections.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, any caveats, saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Item F, first read of ordinance number 2025-21, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, for Prairie Chase text amendment, PC 2547 TA.
Back again.
Welcome back.
So, Prairie Chase, Section 2, if you recall, this piece got approvals, actually currently under construction. But there is a piece in the commitments based on the design of the buildings. They're essentially requesting to remove the commitment that would require irrigation of the front yard. As staff looked at this and analyzed essentially the request, the areas that they're, of the front yard that they're looking at would not be essentially ground cover. It would be landscaped beds versus grass. And so, the concern over the irrigation, right, was not, didn't essentially feel that was warranted based on this design. Plan Commission did hear this as well, or hear this at their August Plan Commission meeting, where they did vote to send a favorable recommendation, seven in favor, zero against. This would be first read only this evening. I know the, there are representatives of the project here as well, if you have questions for them, but I'll answer any other questions you might have.
I'll open it up to council, if there are any questions or concerns regarding this. I'm hearing none. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Item G, first reading, consider adoption of ordinance 2025-22 for the 2026 salary matrix.
So, council, what you have in front of you is the 2026 proposed salary matrix. You'll notice, some DNEs did raise, some did not, because those employees are not anywhere near their DNE right now. What we are asking for town civilian employees, along with the Clerk Treasure employees, is a guaranteed 3% cost of living raise. And the DNEs also have baked in a 2%, so it'd be a total of 5% for performance. And that would be up to the department heads for the town civilian employees. Police Department is asking for 5% raise for their department, and the fire station is asking 4%.
The 4% of the fire department is contractual, if I remember right?
For the union, yes.
I would open the proceedings. Any questions, comments from council?
Do we know what our tax rate, adopted tax rate was on this last year? It doesn't show up online. I was comparing last year's numbers to this year's, and this year's is 1.59, but it doesn't state what last year's was. Does anybody happen to know? Because it's not on the website I could find.
I do not recall, but I'm guessing that Crone can figure it out by the time it comes up here, because I know he presented that to us last year.
He's already typing.
It's a 139 for those online.
Are there any questions or comments regarding this item at the time?
I've got one. So, it looks like, if I understood you right, Katie, we have no intent of doing any type of increase over 5%, even though some DNEs are going up, you know, 10, 12, 15, 20% on some line items?
That is correct.
Okay.
The large adjustments, you'll notice, those are to catch them up. There's a couple positions on there that isn't at the base pay of what, like, another superintendent is making. So, we're trying to make everything uniform with some of it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
My only concern is that, you know, fire contractually can only have a 4%, but yet some other departments are asking for 5%. You know, how are we going to state that one department is better or deserves more of a percentage of a raise than what another department does?
I think I'd have a couple on that. One is, there's a contractual agreement to that, and that's kind of the benefit of the bargain that you get. Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose. I think they were ahead last year. I think last year, we did 3%. We're really testing memory, which is dangerous with me. I think we did 3% across the board, and they got 4. You know, this year, some will get extra for performance, kind of the contract that goes with that. Along with, I think we've seen some, thankfully, tides reduce in the public safety side, where the bidding war has slowed way down. But ultimately, there is still a very limited number of public safety employees, as far as what's available for any given area, anywhere in the country. And so, you know, if you pay the bottom of the barrel, you get the bottom of the barrel, and if you pay the top of the barrel, you get, you get the top. And then, of course, you know, you can pay reasonably, and you get, you still get very good officers across the way and firefighters across the way. So, you know, whether people agree or not, I've always been a little more sensitive to the fire and police ones, just because public safety is a different bidding game with a different set of people. And it's not at all a knock on the, what we might call civilian side employees of the town. It's just, that's where that is at the moment. And at any given time, the town could go the same way, you know. If STEM education decreases and we get fewer civil engineers, we're going to have to pay more for civil engineers. That's just how the market goes. The market currently on firefighters and police officers is tight, and so, there's probably going to be a percent here or there variation there, reflecting how that market's running.
Counselor Smock, I do want to clarify. So, for instance, if you look at Parks Operation Manager, you see the DNE increase largely. That position, there's a probability it will go over 5%, because that position should pay what a superintendent makes. And they're severely lower than what a superintendent is making right now. So, to promise that nobody will go over the 5%, I'm not comfortable with making that promise, because we are bumping some up to make them unified with the positions that are adjacent to them.
Are there more questions or comments at this time on the first read?
I'd like to congratulate town staff, especially Katie, on this. There are some of our neighboring municipalities that are not able to do this for their employees this year. Thankfully, in times past and currently, the balanced approach we've taken with town and our growth and our expansion that we've been doing is providing us this opportunity. So, I know that ultimately, it falls on council, but you've certainly picked up the football and run with it. And I know you and I have had many conversations about how we're growing the town, and it would be disingenuous to not say that there's not a little bit of envy from my peers in the area. So, thank you for your hard work.
That concludes first read for that item. Brings us to page three in your packet. First reading, consider adoption of the ordinance 2025-23, an ordinance to the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, establishing the appropriations for the 2026 budget tax levies, tax rates for the Town of Whitestown, Indiana. As a reminder, we did add public hearing into this item after the presentation and some council questions. So, bear with us as we get that going.
My counsel, you ready for me? Nathan Fox with the Crone Associates, municipal advisor for the town, here to kind of present some budget information and some information for the public before the public hearing. We had a meeting, just to remind you guys, we had a budget workshop meeting to introduce the budget on August 21st. Nothing has changed from that meeting in the budget terms of what is in the ordinance that will go to the adoption meeting on October 8th. But I have a short-- But I have a short presentation and then I can open up to the council questions from what we discussed back in August. Just for public's information and council reminder, the approval schedule, the DLGF reviews the budget based on an 18-month rolling budget, so the second half of 2025 and the full 2020-26 year. Basically, if you can afford it, they'll prove it. They don't really look past that 18-month cycle for sustainability purposes. As part of our, you know, relationship with the town and the clerk treasurer, we look at the budget not just for the next year, but for the foreseeable future to make sure it's sustainable. Part of the deadlines for the budget, November 1st, 2025 is the deadline to adopt that. You have to have a public hearing and 10 days before the public hearing, we have to have that notice for adoption. Tonight is the public hearing and we did notice this hearing 10 days ago. At least 10 days after this meeting, the council can adopt the budget and we have that scheduled for, I believe, October 8th. So it kind of gives the town and clerk treasurer about two-month window to get the budget to you guys to review to meet this deadline. Revenues, just briefly, you know, generally have been maximized under the statutes. You guys, the main revenue for the, for the town is the property tax levy. The town kind of controls the allocation, how much to allocate to what department and what fund. The tax levy is controlled with a max levy. You do for the past five years and before we had a three-year growth appeal where you can appeal that max levy. This will be the last year to take that opportunity and it's not a given that you will receive it. The LGF will review your application like they have in the past and will notify the town if you, if they approve it. The miscellaneous revenues associated with the levies, it's based off of pro-rata, so it's your C-Vep excise tax, local income tax, county controlled, pay, payment in lieu of town, or payment in lieu of taxes, that's town control as of right now, you guys don't have any. And then other town controls, building permit fees, other type of fees and other services and charges. Appropriations, town generally has control of those allocations. Basically, how much do you want to fund each department and how to allocate those funds? Historically, we have mapped revenues to appropriations to zero-based budgeting. This year, just like similar to last year's, we work with the clerk treasurer, like May, June timeframe to kind of look at previous year's actual results and what's the actual results looking like for June 20, for 2025. From there, we kind of make a baseline budget from what we have seen in the previous years. Then in July, we meet with town manager and department heads and go over that baseline budget to see if there's any significant changes, new hires, need of new resources compared to previous years. The department funds held to, the departments and funds are held to major budget classifications. Those are personal services, supplies, other services, charges, capitalizing, debt service. Those are the buckets that you guys buy, fund by department, you are approving and allowing the department heads to have the flexibility to work within there. Obviously, we have certain lines within those categories that detail out those categories, but you're ultimately kind of approving those totals within those buckets and also within the total fund and department. Here's just a five-year kind of historical or four-year estimate for 2026. This shows your assessed value from 2022 through estimated 2026. So since 2022, your assessed values almost double or will double. We currently do not have to pay 2026 assessed values. I don't know when we'll, we'll get those. The neutralizations, the TIF neutralizations aren't completed. But after those are completed, the county should turn around, that you guys certified assessed values pretty quickly after that. That's not necessarily the final assessed value that would go into the budget order because there could be appeals that could adjust that. The top line of, I think it's like gray or white line, that is your total town tax rate. It's decreased slightly from 2022 to 2025 along with the town's tax rate, which was a dollar, almost a dollar 15 2022, and in 2025 went down to a dollar 39. We're estimating that the tax rate could go up briefly to a dollar 45. And that's just dependent on, and it's an estimate based off of assuming that you guys have a 15% growth in assessed value and also assuming that the DLGF approves your three-year growth appeal. And to comment on that is by the adoption meeting, we might have some of that information, the certified assessed value to help kind of gear to where that tax rate could go. But after the adoption meeting, DLGF will provide the town a 1782 notice. And at that time, we could make a change, can't increase anything in that 1782 notice budget levy tax rate, but we could decide to decrease if there's any significant fluctuations. If at the time of adoption, we don't have some of these unknowns known by that.
And just a piece on the dollar 39, I think when we adopted last year, it was higher than a dollar 39, but the town tax rate varies based upon assessed value, correct?
Correct.
Because we have a set budget amount and then the amount of assessed value, obviously the percentage will shift on that.
Correct. I think, and I didn't look approach that.
I can tell you what it is. Last year was 1.4944.
Okay.
And on the Form 4?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was.
So we always advertise high to give the council and management flexibility. It's just flexibility purposes, but I think the, the tax rate will come probably between, probably at the max of a dollar 45 and, and in between where it was last year. But there's some unknowns. The three-year growth appeal and where 2026 assessed values will come in. Similar schedule, but it shows the, the top bar, the assessed value again comparing to the major budget funds. And we can kind of go over, I know we went over in the budget workshop, some of the increases. General fund had some increases for some capital projects. The Rex project is one of those items. And also personal wage or personal services increase in the general fund for some shifting of salaries and also the health insurance premiums as we discussed at the workshop. Last year, we budgeted, I think, nine to 10 months of premiums. This year, for 2026, we'll need 12 months of premiums. And also that increase for new hires and premium increases just from year over year. This is probably a little hard to see on the big screen, but this is just showing the, the property tax levy allocation by funds. So general fund, fire, MVH Park. It does kind of have the published rate at a dollar, I think 59 is what we have it as published. That is based off of your assessed value increasing 5% from last year. So we're estimating the 2026 assessed value to be at a dollar 45. And the levy that's provided and allocated to the various funds is to provide either positive or neutral cash flows for each one of those funds. Similar to previous years, we are making sure the revenues match the expenses. Make sure, okay. Last thing, it's kind of already covered previously from Katie and earlier today. In general, the salary and wages employment benefits increased at least 3% for the cost of living adjustments. There's also been some other salary adjustments as Katie explained earlier. I just kind of went over the health insurance assumes increases in premiums. And then the other appropriation adjustments that we had in here is just inflationary increases for energy and supply costs, adjustments to various service lines based on historical analysis and review of projected needs. And then the last thing was the capital outlays increased from the Rex project and other capital, other road improvement projects. So that kind of closed. I went over that pretty fast, the, the presentation. And then I can kind of go over the Form 3 or Form 4 that's also attached on the agenda. Or any questions on the, the detailed budget?
Please continue.
I'll go over the Form 4. This is part of the ordinance. Again, nothing's being approved, just a public hearing and first read. The Form 3 is very similar to this. It shows where the three-year growth appeal is going into the general fund and I think in the MVH fund. Also, the Form 3 has an adopt, or a budget estimate a little higher than what the adopted. That's purely just to advertise high and give the council and management some flexibility. The total down here says 51.5. I think it's about two and a half or 2.7 million higher than what we have on the Form 4. And the Form 4, the adopted budget and the adopted levy is what was presented to you guys at the budget workshop when we introduced the budget. And again, the tax rate here is based off of a 15% increase to the assessed value and assuming the three-year growth appeal comes into play.
Where's the variation here that the Form 4 has a dollar 59 adopted tax rate and the proposal at a dollar 45? What's the difference in between?
The proposal that was on the slide?
The proposal on the slide, I think it was a dollar 45.
That's a, oh, so I misspoke. The dollar 59 is based off of 5% increase in assessed value. Where, so you have to advertise high. We think if the assessed value comes up 15%, your tax rate will land around a dollar 45.
Okay. So this is the 5%?
Correct.
Our expected scenario is more like the slide of 15%, which would be a dollar 45?
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
I think other than that, that's what I wanted to kind of present. Then I'll open up to any questions on the budget, anything that we went over in the workshop meeting less than a month ago. Or any other questions?
At this time, I will open it to questions from council.
I don't necessarily have a whole lot of questions, but if, you know, come next year, most likely we will not have a three-year levy appeal, correct?
So the, no. Next year at this time when I'm presenting, there will, you guys will be restricted to what the statewide max levy growth, which was probably going to be around 3% to 4%. So next year, you're, you're going to be very limited on how much you can grow your levy. You guys, on your three-year growth appeal, quantit, there's two pieces to a quantitative analysis. And you guys have hit that with flying colors with your growth and assessed value over the last five, six years. And then there's a qualitative analysis that DLGF makes you send in a application form, answering questions and the reasons why and the needs for the three-year growth appeal. All that will go away next year and you'll be limited to a probably between 2% to 4% levy growth.
Which would mean that most likely we would be less revenue, obviously coming into the town.
Correct.
So this is my fear because I mentioned this last year. I mentioned it the last two years. But last year I mentioned this as well. We already have the highest tax rate. And this is even, 145 is still increasing our tax rate. I think we really have to start thinking conservatively about our residents and we've really got to get a handle on our budgets. Other towns around us are downsizing, they're, you know, cutting departments, they're cutting, you know, the little things. I know years ago Wisetown did put a, like not necessarily a freezing halt. I think this may have been before your time, Eric. But they did ask all the departments to lower their budgets by 5% because we were not going to raise the tax rate on the residents. So these are things we've got to start thinking about because my biggest fear is we're going to lose money next year. Then where do we make up the money? We're going to have to do another increase the following year, not knowing what Senate Bill 1 is going to look like in 2027. We'll probably have to do another increase. Are people going to want to stay here?
An increase in your tax rate?
Increase in the tax rate.
You're not going to be able to increase your tax rate. Like with Senate Bill 1, you're not going to really have much control of your tax rate. It's, if you're going to increase your levy, let's say if you guys going forward, I think about two or three years, there will be a special meeting of, the only thing on the agenda is approving the levy. If you guys are increasing your, increasing your maximum levy. So if you can only increase your levy by 4% and your assessed value only increases 4%, your tax rate stays the same. So you won't have too much control of your tax rate going forward because you're going to be dependent on where your assessed value is every year. And under Senate Bill 1, it's, you have all those phase-in deductions on residential properties and 2% multifamily property. So over the next five years through 2031, like the 2% residential properties, you're going to see an AV reduction of at least 30%, 33%. So if your AV goes down and your levy can only go up 4%, your tax rate's going to artificially go up in the future. But your collections is not. So your residents aren't, your residential properties will pay less in property taxes under Senate Bill 1 because of their standard deductions. Multifamily partners, it kind of depends where the tax rate, the 2% limits. They may pay about the same in five years because of where the tax rate goes. Now your 3% commercial properties will be paying more of your levy in the future because the tax rate's increasing. Your residential properties are capped at 1%. They're going to get additional deductions. Those commercial properties aren't capped to 3% and your tax rate's not at $3 yet. So it's going to be tough to actually control your tax rate going forward because you're going to be dependent on this assessed value every year. Now I think next year, your assessed value might still increase because of all the growth you're having. That will all, like I think 2026, your assessed value have gone up 15%. And Senate Bill 1 has some deductions, assessed value deductions built in there. That, those deductions will continue through 2031. So you will start seeing your assessed value to start tailoring off, most likely because of Senate Bill 1.
If I could ask a clarifying question on that. To put it in layman's terms, with the conversations I've had with some of my peers throughout the county, we're actually in a pretty enviable position in the fact that we can outgrow the loss that other communities are going to feel, especially with our balanced approach towards how we are growing in our community. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah. I, I mean, the, the town just got a, S&amp;P did a rating on a bond and gave you a favorable rating of AA+. One of the things that they chimed in there about a strength of the town is the financial background, the, the budgeting and the sustainability of that budget and to be able to withstand the Senate Bill 1 potential negative impacts. And as I said earlier, you know, we're looking at these revenue projections in five to six years. So we're assuming that your property tax levy is only going to go up 2% or 3% and then budgets going up between 3% and 5% and making sure that your budget in five years is still sustainable. There's still some unknowns on what those revenues, future revenues are going to be, if there's going to be a significant decrease. But ultimately, the way the town is built right now, there could, what's going to hit probably first is potential capital outlet projects. If you originally, before Senate Bill 1 was going to plan on doing five projects, two or three of those might have to be delayed because of Senate Bill 1 and the revenue streams coming in. Their potential, there is potential where there could be some cuts to budgets, but I think as of right now, you're in a position that that's not, if there is, it's not going to be significant. Like you're able to withstand some of this, some of this potential negative impacts from Senate Bill 1.
Thank you.
The only thing, I mean, I, I don't like the increase. I think that's the biggest complaint that I heard while door knocking. I'm sure a lot of, well, at least Dan, probably Toby heard it because we door knocked. The biggest complaints I heard from residents was we have the highest tax rate and we have the highest water bills. And here we're looking at raising the tax rate again.
Yeah, I don't know. Having come from a growing community to come down here, it's, it's tough. People don't want to pay higher taxes, but people want the fire department at their house in less than four minutes. People don't want to pay higher taxes, but they want to see a police officer every, you know, day or two patrolling their neighborhood. know, day or two patrolling their neighborhood. The two don't align. And so it's kind of the struggle we have up here and the struggle that's going to really hit with Senate Bill 1 is we have to figure out where our funding goes off of that and ultimately, if your percentages increase, but then costs don't increase in the same line, then now you're talking, all right, who's getting the money and who's not, kind of to your point, is that's...that's going to be the game in future years. To some extent, we have to do what we have to do to get what we can to get the...get the growth appeal to get there. I mean, Senate Bill 1 is going to be interesting as that changes the next few years. I mean, ultimately, there's a piece of me that thinks Senate Bill 1 maybe intentionally or not is a bit of a land grab, right? In that if you're giving some deductions off of assessed value, then the only way that you can continue to significantly grow your budget is grab more property so you have more assessed value. I maybe would have believed that a little less if it wasn't for the township activity that we saw out of the Senate last year that ended up not going anywhere, but I think ultimately, there's a land grab coming under Senate Bill 1 unless something significantly changes. But all to say, I agree. I think there's going to be some real reckoning, period, across all governments in light of Senate Bill 1 on...people will be taxed if they want fire and roads and police and that. I think Senate Bill 1 hides the ball, which is probably my biggest objection to Senate Bill 1, which is we're going to make your property taxes go down, but then you can pass local income taxes and that's how you plug your gap. And it's like, great. So what you're saying is the state doesn't want to be the bad guy, but you want us to be the bad guy as we go forward on that. I don't know that had a core point to that other than Senate Bill 1 irritates me in that we're sitting here dealing with the fallout and really weren't listened to on the deal with that. And certainly, there is...there is a coming reckoning of it. And honestly, to Nathan's point, I think people...people need to understand their taxes better because I think what's going to happen is exactly what Nathan's saying, which is tax rates will go up and they will probably go up significantly. And it's up to the average person to realize that, you know, that...honestly, for my house, this tax rate could probably be $6, right, as our adopted tax rate and it wouldn't matter. I'm already paying my limit of 1% plus everything that gets tacked on there, right? So I think people are just going to have to get smarter about their taxes so that if it does have an impact on you, make sure that you're expressing that. But you're going to have to understand, does it impact you or you hit the limits and we could increase it to the moon and it still wouldn't do anything to you? At that point, it becomes more of a commercial...are we taxing out commercial development in businesses, which is still a serious, but a whole different concern off of that.
Nathan, do we happen to have an idea of how many people residential-wise have met their caps? Is there a way to figure that?
We probably have some data on that for 2025. I'll have to look, but I'll have to ask somebody else in my office that looked at some of the...we did...like, you can ask the county for a parcel dump of every resident and then you can...they'll provide the property tax bill in that dump so you can recalc it and kind of see who's at the cap. But it's not...like, unfortunately, that piece is not...like, you can project it, but it'd be nice if we had to pay 2026 because that's when Senate Bill 1's deductions kick in and see where...what happened to the tax...or the property tax bill for residential units. But part of the...it's hard, like, I understand the tax rate and like seeing it up. It's...that's not, to me, like, yes, if the tax rate goes up 5 cents, I understand the optics of it, but what you're really kind of improving is your max levy, the dollars that you're potentially collecting. And some of those dollars, even though what we have there is adopted tax levy, you're going to have higher circuit breaker loss as your tax rates go up because of the...everybody hitting their caps. So even with the higher levy that I'm showing there, the collections coming in is going to be a little less. So if you guys don't get the three-year growth appeal from DLGF, it will, you know, reduce your funding or be able to increase your property tax revenue for next year and going forward. And that is going to be used for, you know, the growth of departments, road maintenance, public safety. And knowing that in the future, you're only going to be able to add max, increase your levy 4%. It's a...hopefully, the DLGF approves that because for a growing community as Whitestown, you're going to need those funds in the future with a limited resource going forward.
Yeah, I think that's the twist that worries me is before those deductions really kick in, they have incentivized governments to spend as much as possible to get projects done because with the massive budget cut, you're looking more at maintenance than you are development. Development takes a massive shot because your budget is tested at 2% to 3% or 3% to 4% just in the increase in cost and maintenance. You're not talking about building anything.
Yeah. I mean, going forward, if you're going to increase your proper tax levy 3% to 4%, you're probably matching inflation, cost of living adjustments. So I want to clarify a comment I said earlier. Like, going forward, there's probably...I don't see...foreseeing like any necessary department budget cuts, like, you know, layoffs or anything like that. But what it could happen is delaying the growth of departments. So if in five years, six years, you need to hire 10 new public safety employees, firefighters, police officers, you might have to delay that a couple of years because of your limited growth ability.
I have a feeling the five of us could probably go on about this for a little while longer, but I think for a first read, unless anyone has any really pressing concerns or comments, we could probably get past council here and move on to public hearing. All right. Thank you very much. The time is 7:17 PM and I will now open the floor to public hearing. I know we have at least one person in the room that would like to speak. Is there anyone online that has indicated they want to speak regarding this public hearing item?
I do not have any requests online for anyone to speak on this item.
Thank you very much. Anyone in the building that would like to come up and speak regarding this item, please come up and do so now.
Good evening. Ken Kingsill, 6515 East County Road, 750 South. And that's a sobering discussion or it should be sobering to local governments and people that need to worry about town budgets. I think we all should...or you all should be thanking your stars about all the warehouses we have because the 3% property tax cap that applies to them is going to be very important, I think, as going forward. Most residents, frankly, are already at that 1% cap, I would think, and therefore, tax rate doesn't really matter because you're capped at...you know, you're at the cap. So what the rate is, is going to impact the 3%ers and that's going to be the warehouses we have out there. And so I'm a bit sheepish up here to be nitpicking on the budget going forward after hearing that discussion, but I'll go ahead and make my comments. Firstly, I'm a little bit disappointed that the department budget details weren't attached to this agenda tonight. There was the breakdown attached to the workshop meeting agenda and that gave a lot of details as to...or some of the details with regard to the proposed budgeting for next year. And I was able to go back and find that, but I think your average citizen that doesn't necessarily come to all the council meetings might have had difficulty finding that information and therefore would not be able to come up here and speak to it. So I think it would have been very easy to have linked that same document from the workshop to this agenda so that we could encourage more people to get up here and talk about it. I would like to talk a little bit about the legal budget going forward. This year, I believe we originally were budgeted...or you were budgeted at $600,000 for legal and that got spent in July, I believe, and then there had to be an adjustment to that. In 2021, the annual legal expense was $572,000. In 2022, it was $704,000. In 2023, it went down to $590,000. And then last year, the first year of your council, it went up to seven...just a little over $700,000. To date, you're at a $80,000 per month average on your legal, which projects to just under $1 million for the year. I really don't think that the increase from 600 to 900 is warranted. I believe that there's been inefficient use of your legal department. There's a lot that your staff can do that I believe you're not utilizing. I believe that...
Mr. Kingsill, I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Mr. Sumner, on that topic, do you have the previous to 2025 legal expenditures at your fingertips or could find them?
I have. I can get those numbers as we go. Is there a particular year that you want to know right now? First? 2024 with TAFT. We spent a total of $740,950.
2023?
Give me two seconds.
No problem.
2023, a total was $849,126. That's correct.
2022? Thank you, Mr. Sumner.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that would like to approach the mic regarding this item on the public hearing? Seeing nobody to approach, it is 7:22 and I will hereby close the public hearing. For the record, Item I and Item J, I am passing the...
Hold on. I just have a comment before we move on to the next one.
Oh, please.
Not knowing what Mr. King Hill was talking about before he came up, I think as far as legal, we really need to start looking, and I have mentioned this to a couple of people, we really need to start looking at an in-house attorney. The county did this last year or for the beginning of this year and they're saving over a quarter of a million dollars, almost. Their attorney budget line item, I had listened to their budget meeting on Tuesday, $222,000. Now, they do still contract out for their bonding and I'm getting a list of what other little things that they do still contract out, but I think we really need to start looking at an in-house attorney. I mean, it's financially responsible. We have to start looking.
And that's obviously a side conversation from this time and place. I will say that I've spoken to multiple members of the county council regarding that item and the suggestion has been to not hire an in-house attorney at this time, especially with our rapid growth in the work that we are doing. And the amount of contracting out and the issues that come with it, not to mention the scope of knowledge provided by a firm. And we can have that conversation when the time comes. This is not it, but I'm happy to share with you offline the conversations that I've had with those members of the county council and with our own staff, indicating that they would prefer to keep with a firm at this time for scope of knowledge. But regardless, as we both said, it's not a right now conversation.
Right.
Item I and Item J, I'm passing the proverbial gavel to the vice president here as I am recusing myself. However, I will be available if there are any questions for either item.
Sounds good. And we will pick up new business at Item I acknowledgement and acceptance by Town Council of Uniform Conflict of Interest Disclosure Form for Counselor Patterson. This was presented to the council and attached to the agenda and pertains to the bid work that was done on Item J. We do have a request to speak from Mr. Kingsill. If you want to step up. And having already established residence, you may come in.
Do I have to introduce myself again?
You're good.
I'm good. All right. I object to the town of Whitestown continuing to purchase vehicles from the employer of the town council president. While it may be technically legal to proceed by filing this conflict of interest disclosure statement, it's simply not the right thing to do. This will be the third time, at least, under this current council leadership structure that this has occurred. The first time without a timely disclosure statement. As a public servant, it is always best to avoid the appearance of impropriety. These continued acts, again, while technically legal, are the epitome of the appearance of impropriety and exhibit a blatant lack of judgment on the part of the council president. I, for one, have no confidence in the ability or desire of this council president to act in the best interests of Whitestown and certainly hope that he is not again elected by you all to continue as president for this upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King Hill. Kingsill. Seeing no other requests to speak. Do we have any online?
No one online has requested to speak on this item.
All right. Takes it then for any comments, discussion from the council.
I would like to ask Councilman Patterson a couple of questions regarding the conflict of interest and also the vehicles that were purchased or haven't purchased from your employer, Pearson Ford. Have those vehicle purchases resulted in the town saving money or have we ever overpaid for any of the vehicles that have been purchased by council?
No, you can speak from up here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. Have those purchases resulted in the town saving money? The ones that were purchased from Pearson Ford, yes, sir. They were always...the ones that were purchased were always the lowest responding bid for what was requested.
And for me, not having any dog in this fight whatsoever, the question that I have is if this is saving the town money and this is being conducted in the open without any malfeasance that I can see, I'm kind of perplexed a little bit as to why we would exclude a bidder that is able to provide a service to the town, save us money. At the same time, we keep talking about how legal is...we need to save money from legal and here's a way that we're saving money here. So I mean, if you'd like to respond.
I'm certainly happy to and I can speak. First off, I have a limited scope of engagement on Item J and I will explain that in a moment if you'll permit me. But we will go back to the very first bid that I was involved with, which as some of you may remember was 10 work trucks. The exact number's not in front of me, but the discounts and pricing that was given by me saved the town over $70,000 total on that purchase. My knowledge of the industry also saved us, I believe it was $18,000 on a larger truck snowplow dump bed that I did not bid on, but I still know about the industry. I would have to talk to...well, Jason's not here to ask that. Is he? Oh, he's had it back. Well, he wasn't the guy back then, so never mind. And the way...the way that that money was saved was simply that I took all of myself out of the equation as far as commissions and benefits to save the town money because it's in the interest of my community to save money. Also, I did have conversations with people within the county that oversee this sort of thing and was flat out told they wished more public officials would take this approach to save their community's money and not benefit from their actions and I was very appreciative of those comments. Now, as we have moved forward, there was a purchase a few months ago, I believe it was with Dom. was with Dom, where a Mr. Luke, Luke Carnoodle, salesperson at Pearson Ford did the bid, and while I showed Mr. Carnoodle how to do the bid, that was his bid. I recused myself from that and submitted a conflict of interest form on that one simply because I work at Pearson Ford, but I was not the person who made that bid. And on item J, this is where I said I'd come back to this one, we have now hired a full-time, a second full-time fleet and commercial salesperson, so it's no longer a one-man show with me, and anything that's come in that has town of Whitestown written on it, I've handed to him and stayed out of it. So I did not do this bid, I did not put the pricing together for this bid, and spoiler alert, I believe that the town of Whitestown did not choose Pearson Ford in this bid, probably because the guy who did this bid wanted to actually make money on this bid. Can't take that from him. Now, am I going to tell anyone that they can't purchase vehicles from my employer? Absolutely not, I'm not going to say that. However, any for, any purchases from Whitestown from my employer, while there is other people there to cover it, I am happy to step away, not touch, and let other people handle, and then do what I'm doing right now, which is to recuse myself from the bid. So, the reason you're not saving a lot more money on this particular bid versus previous ones that I did is because I'm not involved in it. So, you got what you wanted. I'm definitely not making any money on this and didn't touch it. Does that answer what you needed, sir?
Um, that, that does answer my question.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
I'm going to piggyback off of that for just a moment, because that, there's no difference in between town employees using my place of employment across the street, Lowe's, on a daily basis, and they're in there every single day. I don't have any direct involvement with it, but we continue to use Lowe's because A, it's convenient, we provide the goods and services that the town needs. That is no different than what Dan's employer provides as well.
If you'll indulge me one second, Mr. Vice President.
Sure, the subject is, as to your conflict, so.
It's a fine line, right? I, obviously, I, I support my employer and he supports the community, at the same time I support my town. I've done nothing immoral by saving the town money, and I've certainly done nothing illegal as has been proven, and I've taken the further steps to make sure that I'm not touching these deals. So, any further accusations of impropriety or suggestions that I have done something somehow against my nature are honestly insulting, rude, and beneath you. But regardless, this will be the policy moving forward with my employer, is that as long as there is someone else in that department, I will not touch anything from the town of Whitestown.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? All right, seeing none. This is an acknowledgment and acceptance. I do not recall, do we do a motion practice on this, councillor? I don't think we have, but of course it's-
I'm sorry, you asked me that right-
Like the waiter, I ask you as you drink or eat.
Um, it is not an approval, it's an acceptance.
Okay.
So you just, acknowledgement that it has been presented to you, and that you've heard what he had to say, and that's, you don't need to vote on it.
Okay. With that then, acknowledged receipt and acceptance by the town council of the form. And that takes us then to item J. Consider expenditure exceeding $25,000 not to exceed $81,785.50 for the purchase of two work vehicles. Sri?
Good evening, so this is to replace the two trucks for the building department. The two trucks that we are replacing is from 2016, so this is just to replace those two trucks. And the low bidder with everything, the trucks, the two trucks we are going after is the Chevrolet Silverados, and they had, they come with everything that we were looking for in the RFQ. And then the purchases, we are recommending that we purchase those from the Community Auto Group, Inc., based of Bloomington, Indiana.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments, discussion?
Sri, what are we doing with the previous?
So, we will put it back on auction, like we did some of the other trucks earlier this year. We might keep one as a spare, and we will put the other one on other, we have actually, we'll have three spares, so we'll keep one spare and we'll put the two back into action.
Okay.
Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the expenditure exceeding $25,000 not to exceed $81,785.50 for the purchase of two work vehicles for the building department from Community Auto Group, Inc.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. As a reminder, councillor Patterson has recused himself from voting on item J. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Carries four zero. With that, we will move to item K, and I'll pass it back to council president.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and you did math way better than I normally do when someone steps out of the vote. Item K, consider expenditure exceeding $25,000 not to exceed $182,500. Agreement for professional services between the town of Whitestown, Indiana and United Consulting. Sri?
Hello, so this is to do preliminary design, utility coordination, land acquisition, and drainage design for preliminary for the roundabout at County Road 200 and 650. The reason that triggered this was with all the development that's happening with Beckman Park, we've been getting a lot of questions and concerns about increased traffic, which it is going to have increased traffic. So, so right now is the right time to look at this roundabout design, so we can go ahead and get the land we need and design the drainage so that we can take it to the Beckman Park development. So this is just for the preliminary design, like take it to the 50%, so we know what the right-of-way impacts are, the utility impacts are, and then we can coordinate that with the Beckman Park development and get all the land we need, and any utility or any drainage design could be accommodated.
Thank you, Sri. Any questions or considerations from council?
Figures to be nuns. Mr. President, I make a motion-
I will hold you for a moment, because I think Mr. Thomas was the, no? Okay, I apologize, go right ahead.
G'day, g'day. I would make a motion to approve the expenditure exceeding $25,000 not to exceed $182,500 on the agreement for professional services with United Consulting on the roundabout. Second.
Item has been, a motion has been made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item L, consider expenditure exceeding $25,000 not to exceed $55,504 for agreement for professional services between the town of Whitestown, Indiana and BLA Incorporated for 2026 resurfacing program.
So this is similar to what we did this year and last year, so we have set aside almost two and a half million dollars for resurfacing next year, plus another million coming from community crossings. So this is just to come up with a design and a bid package for this resurfacing program for next year.
Thank you, Sri. Are there any questions or considerations regarding this item? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion we approve the expenditure exceeding $25,000 not to exceed $55,504 for agreement for professional services between the town of Whitestown, Indiana and BLA, Inc. for the 2026 resurfacing program.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Carries five zero.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Sri. Item M, consider adoption of resolution number 2025-21, a resolution of the town council of the town of Whitestown, Indiana declaring certain personal property to be surplus. Dom?
Good evening, council. What you have before you is a resolution to get rid of, I'm sorry, to surplus our 2013 Gator that we have. It's kind of extended its life period. Again, it's a 2013. We're looking at using the same policy, the surplus policy that we used in the past to get rid of it, so which, we'll probably auction it off as well. So we'll look to get a newer one that'll come to you in, in the future that can meet our capacity that we need now.
I have a question regarding this item that may actually be for Ashley, and I apologize in advance, but if we declare this to be surplus, if, if Dom finds a value for this item, do we have the potential to allow employees to purchase it for that amount so that they could have if they want, or is that a no-go?
While she's thinking about that, we also have reached out to get some values for trade-ins as well. So, once we get back to that, we'll, we'll circle back with legal to see how we can get our best bang for the buck for it.
So, if I may, what you're asking me is that if there's a value, can a employee purchase it? There's a, unfortunately, and what Dom and I were talking about throughout this whole process is that, I mean, what he wanted to do made 100% sense. Unfortunately, the law was not exactly feasible. Unfort, you know, statutes just sometimes do not yield real working solutions. So like the first step here is to declare it surplus, and then there's a laundry list of ways you can choose to dispose of the property. If that does work, I would love that option to be available, because if it's determined to be over a certain amount, which is what we believe, there's some difference in opinions on how much this thing is worth, but on the safe side, we declared it to be surplus, and because we do believe it's over that threshold, there's certain ways you can dispose of it, one of them being public auction. I would love to use it as a trade-in. Unfortunately, that wasn't an available option under the statute. But, happy to look into that, once we know how much it is.
Thing, I'm just looking at options that may, you know, obviously, I don't want to sell it for a dollar.
No.
You know, I want to make sure it's the fair purchase price, but if we could do something like that, I'd love to, but if not, it is what it is. Thank you, sorry for hijacking.
No, you're fine.
No, you're good.
Are there any other further questions from council regarding turning this surplus? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-21, a resolution of the town council of the town of Whitestown, Indiana declaring certain personal property to be surplus.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Carries five zero. Item N, consider expenditure exceeding $25,000 not to exceed $502,000 for 2026 Fleet Project and 2026 Ford Explorer upfitting. Chief Olson?
Good evening, so this is much like in past years, the 2026 Fleet Project, seven Ford Explorer hybrids, along with upfitting, lights, sirens, radios, some other equipment, and some cameras that we may or may not need for an overall price of $501,358. Six of these vehicles will be used for patrol and one for admin.
Are there any questions or statements from council regarding this item?
Scott, do you think you'll ever have a year that you don't ask us for?
No. No, not the way we drive them, I mean, you get five, six years maybe out of them. So, you know, this year we, we did surplus some, some Tahos that were 15s, but yeah, I mean, and, and we've added officers every year as well, so we kept with six for every year until last year. Last year we bought seven, seven again this year. So we, we ran that gamut for six for a long time, but now it's, you know, one of these years I'm going to be asking for eight.
Because I knew that going away from the lease program, that this is supposed to be cheaper.
This is cheaper.
Okay.
So, main reason, or one way I can point out that it's cheaper is every other year we've, we've asked for $632,000 for the budget. This year I'm asking for, it was, I think it's $470,000 because the Axon comes out of a different line item. So, there's the savings right there, and this was the first year. We really saw the big savings, we saw that last year, but it wasn't enough on paper for me to really change the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else, questions, concerns? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve expenditure exceeding $25,000 not to exceed $502,000 for the 2026 Police Fleet Project and Explorer upfitting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor indicate saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Carries five zero. Item O, consider expenditure exceeding $25,000 not to exceed $87,660 for firearms range barn. Chief?
Yes, this is just in preparation of closing on the land for the range, we have not done that yet, I'm anticipating that to happen in October. We did encumber money last December for this project, so I'm really just wanting to get ahead, get the approval, so that when we do get the land, we can try to get it built before the end of the year, so we don't have to worry about reencumbering funds or anything like that. So, we did get, we asked for three bids, we got two back, and this was the, the cheapest bid we could get.
Thank you, chief. There is a public request for comment on this item. Mr. Kingsill, if you'd like to approach.
Ken Kingsill again, 6515 East County Road, 750 South. I'm assuming this, I couldn't find an address on the documents, but I'm assuming this is one of the properties that was discussed a couple of months ago, and it's in Whitestown. And so, my question is, or, or I make the statement that I believe this needs to go through the usual development, development approval process, just like any other development or building that would become, that would come before the town. I think just because it's town-owned doesn't mean it should be, it should be exempt from that. The neighbors and the residents out on the southwest side of town need to be given the opportunity to remonstrate if they so choose, which means they need to be given notice. And so, this could potentially impact people in Mr. Thomas's district, as well as Mr. Nichols' district, as well as myself, I live out there. And so, I request that we table this item and any further proceedings on this until it has gone through the development process with the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kingsill. Are there any questions, comments, concerns from council? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure exceeding $25,000 not to exceed $87,660 for the firearms range barn invoice.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor indicate saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item P, consider expenditure exceeding $25,000 not to exceed $65,150 for building remodel for cyber room. Chief?
So this is a future growth project. We've identified a spare room in our building that I would like to get finished for our cyber division, not only our cyber division, but a county cyber division. I've spoken with all the other department heads, and everybody is all in on Whitestown hosting a countywide cyber division. This room is large enough that this will set us up for the next 15 to 20 years, we can get 10 people in there. We have another room where they're working currently, but I want to be in a position where when the other departments are ready to send manpower down here, we're ready for them. It's also the type of room, while we're going to be adding a lot of electrical and stuff, if that ever goes away, we can certainly reuse the room, it's finished, use it for any number of reasons later on down the road. So, I think it's a win-win. It's right directly across from our case division and our current cyber that works hand-in-hand with them. This would be more of a separated area with analysts from all over the county. I will, would like to note that we also got quoted for a restroom on here, I'm not asking for that, just the top number. I did get three quotes for this, and this was the, the least expensive of the three as well. We're hunting the restroom down the road due to the expense. We're hunting the restroom down the road due to the expense.
I was told to not go into, you know, any public congratulations of the case team or the cyber group for things that they've done lately, so I won't. However, I will say that the proposal to increase this just makes sense, given recent events. And the increase in the popularity, dare I say, of the things that they have to deal with. So, I'm, it's unfortunate, but I'm glad you guys are there to do it.
They've been in the news a lot lately. Hey, I haven't been named on a lot of things, but they have been doing very good work.
Chief, do we know is, are any of the other departments that are sending people here to work in that office going to help share the cost?
Not, not going to share the cost of this renovation project, per se. When we renovated a few years ago for Case, the prosecutor's office chipped in. Right now, I'm just trying to get them convinced to send people down. I think we'll have one department that sends someone down next year. There's also discussions about sharing the costs better, more fairly than what we have been doing with the software for, that all this is required. We do get a little bit from Lebanon and Zionville every year, but by and large, us as well as the county pay a lot more on software costs. And we are working out a resolution with the, for all the four departments to split that cost. I think that'll probably happen next year. So, just really trying to get that, and didn't feel like I could, we could get that going, which is a long-term thing, and ask for this as well.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments, concerns regarding this item?
I think my only comment would be, if you need proof as to how it's expanding, just look at the police report every month. We're up and up and up. We're 69 devices this past month. So, I mean, you're talking two a day on average, being pulled into the room. And it's, I don't know if anyone's ever watched it, it's not a quick process. This takes time, takes effort, takes skill to manage this. So, all to say, I get the space need, as our need for device work continues, and the need for staffing from us and other departments grows.
It's an unfor, it's an unfortunate need.
Yeah, you know, unfortunate period from crime. I think there is a tendency among some that, you know, this is all about crimes against children and such that happen. But I mean, if you think about it, we've had homicides and shootings and all kinds of things that you solve with these things, because everybody's got a phone everywhere, right? So...
Yeah, we use these on every crime that we investigate these days. It's not just, I mean, that gets the focus, because that's the really good work we want to see. But a drug case, we're dumping a phone.
That being said, I would consider a motion.
I'll make the motion, we approve the expenditure exceeding 25,000, not to exceed 65,150 for the building remodel for the cyber room.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Thank you, Chief. Item Q, consider approval of ordinance number 2025-20 for the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana authorizing the issuance of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana Economic Development Revenue and Refunding Revenue Bonds, Bridle Oaks/Mills-on-Main Infrastructure Projects. Hello, Todd.
Hello again. Bridle Oaks/Mills-on-Main, as you recall, this project is east of Walker Farms, south of the Bridle Oaks Single Family Residential Project, and north of Albert S. White, north and east, or excuse me, west of Albert S. White. This ordinance, this is a first reading, so this will come back to you next month. In between now and next month, the Economic Development Commission will also need to act on this, and they will have a public hearing on this as well. But this bond, this proposed economic development bond will do a couple of things. One, refinance an existing Bridle Oaks bond for the, primarily the TIFs lane work. As you'll recall, there was an overall TIF district that covered all of this. The next resolution modifies some of that. But as a result of that, the existing bonds that were out there, worked with those bondholders essentially to refinance that, to make all of this work. So, that's one piece of this, and then the second piece is actually the issuance of the new bonds, as well as, like I said, refinancing the existing. The new bond really is for that extension east of Indigo Blue, across the northern portion of the Mills-on-Main project, and extending east of their project to just about 300 feet west of Albert S. White, as that portion is being constructed by the Bridle Oaks South Residential Project that's going just to the north of this. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
The floor is open to any council member with any question or concern. Thank you, Todd.
You're welcome.
Item R, consider approval of Resolution Number 2025-20 of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana approving, one, a declaratory resolution of an economic development plans, including certain amendments heretofore as approved and adopted by the Town of Whitestown Redevelopment Commission, A, adding to and removing parcels from the Whitestown-Bridle Oaks Economic Development Area and Allocation Area; B, establishing the Whitestown Mills-on-Main Economic Development Area and Allocation Area; and C, establishing the Whitestown-Albert S. White Economic Development Area and Allocation Area; and two, the Order of the Town of Whitestown Plan Commission.
Yes, so we've had a couple steps before now, and we'll have at least one more after this. So, the Redevelopment Commission did hear this, and as that very long intro there suggests. So, Bridle Oaks included this area, as well as two single-family residential pieces. Those are the pieces that are getting removed from the overall Bridle Oaks TIF area. Two other parcels, the Mills-on-Main, and an additional parcel to the east of Mills-on-Main are also being pulled out of that original, and we're essentially creating two new TIF areas, one for the Mills-on-Main, the other titled Albert S. White TIF area, or allocation area. So, those are all coming out. We are adding, as a result of this, essentially a portion of right-of-way of Albert S. White that connects then to other pieces of that original area before those parcels got broken out. And so, those essentially are the four actions that are happening with this resolution. From here, it will go back to the Redevelopment Commission for their confirmatory phase of this process. Plan Commission did hear this and confirmed that it was consistent with the development plans of the comprehensive plan. Answer any questions you might have.
The floor is open to any member of council. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-20, as presented, because that's a lot.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for the approval of Resolution 2025-20. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd. Item S, first reading of Ordinance 2025-24, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana repealing Chapter 2.50 of the Whitestown Town Code, Ordinance Violations Bureau.
I believe that is me again, if I may.
I believe so.
Okay, so, this is a continuation of the cleanup of Town Code in anticipation of getting the Town Court online. While looking through the code, it was determined that the Ordinance Violations Bureau was still technically operational. Why this is a problem is because we don't have a Town Court. And why it's even more, it doesn't make sense to have it on the books right now is because the person who administrates an ordinance, ordinance violations bureau would be the Town Court clerk, and there is no person that works in that position. That position was abolished along with the Town Court Judge. So, essentially, this ordinance would abolish the ordinance violations bureau. If it becomes a situation down the road that we think that it's something that we might use again, it simply can be added back in if there's ever a situation where the, you know, Whitestown is big enough to utilize their own court. But Zionville is not using an ordinance violations bureau at this time, and under the current interlocal agreement, if they ever choose to do so, as long as we are utilizing their court, we would just use their ordinance violations bureau. So, it would be my advice for the Town to abolish the ordinance violations bureau either tonight or tomorrow, or next month. Unfortunately, I think it was just an error when we abolished the Town Court. We just must have forgotten about the OVB, so...
I appreciate the explanation and going in and doing cleanup. Before I open up for any questions or considerations, timing-wise, is there any need to consider a second reading tonight with the Town Court with Zionville? Or is there no conflict there?
There's no conflict.
Okay, thank you. I will now open it to council if they have any questions or comments regarding this item.
I just said, well, my first question was one that you preemptively answered regarding if we ever had our own court, if we'd be able to reinstate it. But you already answered that, I think.
I'll go into it just a little bit more. I know it's already eight o'clock, but I think it's important to address that if we ever get to that point, and we would need to utilize an OVB, it, the ordinances underneath and under the OVB now are going to change so much. It just, it would be easier to start from scratch.
Okay, so we would not be, well, hypothetically, we would not be reinstating this.
Correct.
Starting a new one.
Correct.
Okay, and then my second question, is there any negative effect to keeping it on the books? Or is this just strictly just a...
There's no, I mean, if you wanted to keep it on the books, you could. It just, while we were cleaning up the ordinances, we found it, and it was like, well, there's no reason to really keep it, per se.
Understood. Thank you.
Anyone else? First read complete, thank you. Item T, consider expenditure exceeding 25,000, not to exceed 381,500 for pedestrian bridge connecting Jackson Run Park to Prairie Chase and Lions Park. Dom, welcome back.
So, what you have is a public bid that went out. We received four proposals back in. We went with the lowest bid, which was Morphe Construction. We feel comfortable going with Morphe, because they've done several projects with us. Again, this bridge will connect residents from the Prairie Chase neighborhood all over to Jackson Run, but it also gives trail connection from Trailside all the way over to Jackson Run as well. And this is coming out of the park infrastructure budget.
Are there any questions from council regarding this expenditure?
No, no questions, but I just want to make people aware. The trail doesn't actually go into Lions Park. It doesn't actually tie into Lions Park. I sit on the Lions Club Board, I guess, of Directors. So, just because it says that on here, this doesn't actually go into the park.
Yeah, so it'll actually just be a bridge that users of Lions Park can use to utilize our park at Jackson Run.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the expenditure exceeding $25,000, not to exceed 381,500 for the pedestrian bridge connecting Jackson Run Park to Prairie Chase and Lions Park.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Dom. Item U, discussion regarding issuance of an RFPQ for Fire Station 271, Chief Westridge.
Sorry, I did have it pulled up. There we go. All right, good evening, council. Essentially, in front of you tonight to discuss the fire department's intentions on soliciting RFPQs to replace Station 271. But with that comes a little bit of, a little bit of extra thought in the overall growth of how the fire department needs to be and needs to grow to meet the needs of the community currently and in to the future. With that being said, Station 271 currently was built about 25 years ago, and it was initially built as a pole barn structure for a volunteer fire force. It is now, obviously, it wasn't built for 24/7 occupancy. Technology has changed as far as the wellness of the firefighters and the features that can be in stations for that. But it's just, it's becoming tired and needs to be, we've had Band-Aid after Band-Aid put on it to make it accessible or acceptable for our living, for our firefighters, but that has come to change. So, just real quick, I know most of these are pictures, so it's going to go quick and just kind of briefly overview this. But when we do our station planning, there's a lot of things that go into it, but there's a couple of national standards we utilize. And one of those being the National Fire Protection Association 1710 and ISO ratings. There's a lot of different things in there, but for fire station planning, essentially, we look at the four-minute response time standard that they're after. And I believe Councilman Nichols mentioned that earlier, so that's kind of what we look at. We also look at our incident location data. These are dots of every incident we've responded to for the last five years, or through 2024, doesn't include this year. But essentially, you notice it just continues to get darker in the main corridors and the main areas of our development. So, we look at development as well and see where we're going in the future. Now, really looking at the current station location maps, these polygons represent our four-minute response time. Obviously, this isn't perfect, because there's a lot of factors that come into responding. But this is about as best as we can get average right now of where we can get to within the community in four minutes. There's gaps that we need to address, and there's growth that we need to address, as well as the development continues to push north and intensifies in the areas we haven't now. What we will, here's the run overlay of 2023, I believe, when these maps were done. This is the data that was input in there. As you can imagine, it took a minute to get that there. So, that'll give you kind of an idea of those areas I showed you the last five years. We're, and we are proposing and recommending that we relocate Station 271 to the area Main Street and Albert S. White. And what that will do will give us that Main Street corridor north and south. It gives us the Albert S. White corridor east and west, and allows us to not overlap too much as we continue to plan for the growth on the north side of town. North side of town, this will be just kind of a trivial spot. There's no land in this area, and I will go back and mention that, you know, the town does have two parcels of land at Main and Albert S. White area that could be utilized for a station relocation project. We do not have any currently north, but we are always on the lookout to make that happen so we can plan for future development of said fire station. But you see, adding this third station... But you see, adding this third station on the north end would get us great coverage over our entire area and start to cover the developments that we know are continuing to push north into that area. With even further into the future as necessary, adding a station at the two sixty-seven I sixty-five area would give us that. And mainly, what I would like to express here is having to move station two seventy-one to that area kind of pulls us into the area where we're doing more runs currently. Hopefully sooner than later, get that third station going north to cover future. And then the fourth station as needed and as the runs dictate to be able to cover pretty much entirely our area with minimal overlap and effective response for our citizens.
Thank you very much, Chief. And how long ago did you do these studies as far as locations and four-minute runs time, sir?
So we're continuously working on these runtimes. And this was pretty much wrapped up, I would say, the first quarter of this year as we kind of change things and move things around depending on development and how we look at where our run locations are.
Obviously, we are a rapidly expanding community with a lot of growth, so I appreciate the forethought and wanting to make sure that we can respond where the incidents are and where the incidents are going to be. For clarity's sake, for the audience and for council, there is no voting action required at this time. You're more than welcome to ask whatever questions you would like. Any voting action would actually occur when Chief presents the findings of the R F P Q and actually asks for money. So keep that in mind, but by all means, I will open it up to council for any questions you may have for Chief Westridge.
And I'll just bring forward the fire board discussion as a brief summary and recommend, you go back and watch that. It was pretty extensive. We went on for what, forty-five minutes to an hour on this subject? So I think the core, if I summarize it in the quick shot here is, if we're talking about moving a two seventy-one down to the Main Street, Albert S. White area, you're talking about also shifting out of the north side, like the chief has mentioned. And so that does put time pressure on getting a station three done as soon as possible because we've now moved coverage significantly away from people up on that side that we've pledged to protect. Trying to think through all this stuff we went through and summarize it as quickly as possible. This is about finding out what a new building would cost. There will be a discussion then as to, once we know what a building costs and once we know what it would cost to potentially redo two seventy-one if it was on its site, then we're really then getting deep in that conversation of is it time to move it? And what's the solution to get a two seventy-three going as soon as possible? And that's, this is just my side of it. I think land is the biggest challenge to that. You can spec plan, bond a building with some relative speed, but finding land to put it on that's appropriate is always a challenge because somebody's got to be willing to sell it to you where you need it. So I think that was the big piece is this is precipitating what, as part of the next step, we get numbers in and data that we can work with. There will be a big discussion to be had then as to, now we're talking about really relocating and effectively in short order, turning our department into a three-station department with a potential future fourth station. And there's some real implications to that, cost-wise, staffing-wise, and community-wise. So part of a discussion that will happen once we have data to know what the costs are and what our options are. Just a data collection at this point, but I would say that was the core of the fire board discussion was this brings up a whole lot of things that we have to reckon with as a department at this point. Well, at that point, I should say. And so I would say, think about it and be prepared for those discussions. And is that where we're at? Is that a fair, you were there, was that a fair representation without going too deep in?
Pretty much, yes. I didn't speak at, you know, at the fire board because that's, you know, my district that you're moving the fire station out of and away from. We just heard from Nathan tonight about our budget. We don't know what it's going to look like in a couple of years. We may not be able to afford a third station or staffing for a third station. So it'll be, you know, we do agree that we do need to see, at least see the numbers because we know that building that third station is going to be even higher than what this station would be. So those are things we've got to consider on if we move it. I've talked, you know, Chief and I and Mike had some very deep discussions a couple of weeks ago about this. You know, we're moving away from the township residents that we are legally responsible for as well. Braun has three big developments on the north side, two of them on five seventy-five. One, obviously, at Main Street and two hundred South. So those numbers may not be very little right now, but in the next couple of years. And even Peabodys, I mean, we all see how fast Peabodys is going up. They're already building, getting ready approvals for out there, going crazy in that subdivision. So you're looking at moving a station away from the fastest growing area of town. The only other concern that I've heard from residents, and we've shared this with him, is that the residents that I have had conversations with or that have approached me that live in the Heritage, Walker Farms, and Harvest Park don't want the fire station there. They don't want the noise. They chose not to live next to a fire station. You know, those are things we've got to consider, but that will happen once we get some numbers. And as far as station two seventy-one for not necessarily remodel, I think it was more of adding a breezeway and actually building like a two-story bay, not really a bay, but a brick building that would house the living arrangements. You know, leaves what is currently the living arrangements now as like a training room. The bays would stay and then just look at what it would cost to build a kitchen, living that kind of section on the other end of the bays. So it wouldn't be a total remodel is what, kind of what I was thinking of, that we were not out a ton of money either. Just some thoughts.
Will we be looking at pieces of land that aren't currently owned by the town? Because the areas of town that we currently do own are reserved for other purposes than a fire station for the most part. And I'd hate to take away from those areas, you know, mainly, you know, parks. Yes, there's, I think there is a need for this station that I'd like to see it possibly, you know, on a piece of land we don't currently own.
There's always those options, right? And it's about availability where we need it to make sense. When you start talking about the response models and having to have a specific location to meet those standards, I'm just recommending a general area. How we get to that and where that actually lands is a decision above me to a degree. I can tell you what options are there. Obviously, you know, it incurs additional cost, but everything about this is not an expensive venture, so.
Who will you be sending these R F P Qs out to? Not specific firms, but like what types of, like, are these going to architect firms? They go into construction firms? Where are they, what's the first step?
It may be a mix of both as far as how it's advertised and who actually submits.
It's going to be a public R F P Q, so it's really determinative on.
So it's coming in this direction, not that direction then?
I'm not exactly sure what that means, so I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, as far as, you know, anybody can actually respond to the R F P Q as opposed to us sending it to specific people.
Correct.
They'll, you know.
Yes.
All types of firms can reach out to us, okay?
Yes.
Are there any other questions at this time? Thank you, Chief. Questions?
Thank you.
Man, it's getting late, guys. All right. Item V, consider emergency expenditure for public works project exceeding fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, Dan, hold on.
Thank you. Did you get any of that? All right. About a near collapse on a twenty-four inch sewer line on Indy Road. I went out there, met with Ryan, looked at the TV tapes. You do have chunks of a twenty-four inch ductile iron pipe that is corroded. It's near collapse. So we decided that this was with, working with Katie and Jason, that this was an emergency situation. And we did get a quote to line the pipe. We did get, we did request a second quote, which we never received. So both companies we request the quote from are very, very good companies I've worked with many times in the past. The one that we did get was from Inliner, and that was about eighty-six thousand dollars. It's about a hundred and ninety feet of lining for twenty-four inch pipe. So the reason we decided it was imminent in an emergency was if this collapses, that's about twenty or twenty-five percent of the total sewage from Whitestown goes through this pipe. And if that collapses, you're going to be spending a lot more money, eighty-six thousand dollars.
So to jump in here, obviously, I was part of the conversation of bringing this before council. In your opinion, what kind of timeline do we have between now and possible collapse of this?
You know, it's very hard to determine. There's so much corrosion on the pipe, but there were chunks of the pipe missing from the side and the bottom. It could be two weeks, it could be two years. We just don't know.
So to be clear for council, due to the expenditure of this amount, I did allow this to be put on as a possible emergency, thus the two bids, although one was unresponsive. But first, council has to vote to agree that, yes, this is an emergency. If that fails, it's back to the drawing board where they have to go through the public bid process, three bids, that sort of thing. There are repercussions, obviously, given that, you know, any minute now you have twenty-five percent of stuff doing bad things, but that is up to you. So before I call for either vote, are there any questions from council for Dan at this time?
Just a question as far as how much of our pipe have we checked to see if this is a more pronounced, longer problem, bigger problem for future planning?
That's a good question. Most of your pipe is plastic. This was put in as ductile because it was the depth of thirty feet and it was under Indy Road. I have seen a lot of ductile pipe corrode because of the hydrogen sulfide gas that sewage produces. And typically, ductile is not the best thing to use. Most of your stuff's plastic and all the sewer lines in downtown have been lined. So you don't have too many pinch points of failure.
Good. It had me a little nervous, frankly.
Dan, where is this out exactly on Indy Road?
Do you know where the Indianapolis, or the Indy Road lift station is?
Over by the park, right? By the?
By the Little League Park and those apartments. It's right across the street. Actually, it crosses the pipe, there's a manhole on the west side that goes, and the pipe goes under Indy Road to the lift station, right at the lift station.
Could part of the breakdown also be the amount of traffic and the size of vehicles that are crossing over it by any chance?
I don't think it's a, if it was traffic, we would have saw cracks in the top of it. We didn't see any. It was on the sides and the bottom.
All right, that being said, I will first ask if anyone would like to make a motion to declare this item an emergency expenditure.
I'll make that motion that we declare this item an emergency expenditure.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded, all in favor declaring this an emergency expenditure, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we do have a five-zero emergency, so we can carry on with this.
Just to give you an update, they will probably be out there next week to do this. Thank you.
At this point, I doubt there's any further questions or comments regarding this item, but I will pause for a moment because there are.
I'm guessing the not to exceed would be the eighty-six thousand.
Dan, the not to exceed would be the eighty-six thousand from your quote?
Yes, eighty-six thousand, yes.
And, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
There is a requirement that, under the emergency bidding statute, that just the two different quotes that were obtained, they just need to be read into the minutes or placed in the minutes, so read into the record. I know it's on the agenda, but it's technically not in minutes.
Yeah, I can give you the two quotes. So we got a quote from Inliner for eighty-six thousand dollars. We requested one from Insitu Forum but did not receive a quote.
And Inliner is a company known to be able to provide this kind of work for this utility?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Therefore, I will consider a motion for the approval of the expenditure to line these pipes.
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure for the sewer pipe lining and amount not to exceed eighty-six thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are approved at five-zero. Thank you, Dan. Item W, consider expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand not to exceed forty-six thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty cents for the purchase of a twenty-twenty-four Ford F-150 X L T four-by-four super crew cab for the Whitestown Police Department. Chief?
Thank you. So as the department has gotten busier, so has the amount of callouts for our crime scene investigator. They currently utilize a Tahoe, twenty-twenty Tahoe. It still has some good mileage on it. So what we're wanting to do is get a pickup truck, put a camper shell on it, some pullout drawers. That way, we can have enough room for equipment as well as taking in evidence once on scene. This vehicle that I have quoted here has actually been sold, so I would like the approval to be a like vehicle. Actually, just came across one today, which is a police interceptor, which is also a twenty-twenty-four with nine miles, and it's actually going to be closer to forty-three thousand dollars. So I think we're getting a decent price on that, and it's basically a new vehicle that we're paying used price.
You are getting a decent price on that. Any questions?
I'm surprised you haven't asked for one sooner because we had one. I think we used it a lot.
What's that?
Then we used to have a police truck years ago.
We did, and we have one pickup truck now that we use for training as well that we bought two years ago, maybe beginning of last year. So, yeah, this will be a very good fit for a crime scene, for sure.
Are there any further questions? I would consider a motion.
Just in case.
Probably what you're about to say.
No, probably not.
Okay, well, I was just asking.
You said you had a question. I was going to make a motion, so I'm going to take a while, I guess.
Okay. Just, do we need to change this at all because you said it's a, you need a like, not this exact one? Is there anything that needs to be changed before?
As long as what he's purchasing is a twenty-twenty-four F-150 X L T super crew and it's under the price of forty-six thousand three thirty-six fifty, we should be fine.
I think I was going to manage that in my motion, so we actually worked on.
There you go, we're together.
Something similar.
This is called synergy.
I like it.
Synergy.
We Southwest sides, we've got.
There we go.
Chief is already going and sitting down. He's so over us, he's going to go sit down now.
I am one of them.
So with that then, and the possibility, we found a truck now, but in case it sells in line with the quotes like this, then I make a motion to approve an expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand not to exceed forty-seven thousand dollars for the purchase of a pickup truck for the Whitestown Police Department.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve an expense not to exceed forty-seven thousand dollars for the purchase of a pickup truck for the Whitestown Police Department. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five-zero. And item X, acknowledgement and acceptance by the town council of a uniform conflict of interest disclosure form for Kendrick Davis. I don't see Mr. Davis here.
I'm happy to speak on this item if it pleases the council.
Please go ahead.
My understanding on this item is that there is a contract that is under the level of council approval by one of the departments and that the individual who will be doing the work has a side business not related to his primary employment. His primary employment is. his primary employment. His primary employment is a firefighter with the town of Whitestown. Out of abundance of caution, it was suggested that a conflict of interest statement was submitted to the council. Again, out of abundance of caution, this was submitted to you just for your consideration and, you know, transparency.
Thank you very much. Obviously not a voting item, but if there's any questions?
I just have one question. Does this mean that the clerk treasur and the billing departments are moving to Cozy Lane?
I don't know the answer to that question. I just, just made the document out.
I hadn't heard anything, so I, just out of curiosity.
That is the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding conflict of interest? Consider the form acknowledged and accepted. Thank you. Brings us to item twelve, other business. Is there any other business to bring before this body from any member of council? Hearing none, I'll move on to item thirteen. Would anyone like to make a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Honestly, a-